No. It feels like it could, though.
Probably could.
Snowed the other day.
I don't know if that was snow or if that was hail.
I call it snow.
It's Monty, Minnesota.
Why can't we get that 70 or 65 degrees?
Forty degree difference.
Shorts to...
Yeah, legally.
Yeah, I had stuff I wanted to do outside. I'm like, it's 85 degrees. I'm not doing that now.
That lasts something.
Starts flannel after liberty.
I got a Monday to go to work and I had...
You know, I don't wear shorts even in the summer, maybe on a real hot day, maybe five times a year.
I would be out there starting car before you want to kick to school.
Why is that?
Because I mean, obviously you can't wear shorts, but I would wear shorts a year long.
That I have a garage that will wind in.
I put sweatpants over my shorts for driving the bus and going around outside. As soon as I was in the middle of the year, down to shorts because they kept that 72 in there.
Sweating and move around your sweat. Don't have to do anything.
Waiting for it to be over with.
Yeah, that's too hot. Is that what they're... They always have been keeping?
Do I have to read the state statute?
Oh, I make up that number. One of the biggest complaints about it.
Yeah, right.
Minnesota stands to do 13...
Buildings themselves, the structure and the Gilbert structures were in the boiler water. And the ability to control specifically all...
How far away is it? Could you control it zone? Or was the whole thing is going to be on? Could you zone some rooms to keep one?
Yeah, you could. They had more. You had, in theory, you had more control over each individual.
I thought it was automated request.
Pressure, pressure to the control valve.
Oh.
And all of those things obviously are...
So they were run by air?
Yeah, controlled by air. And then when, if the air compressor faults, everything faults to wide open. Not to off.
That was happening at the library. That's why they were having the windshield.
Those two years don't have ties.
The compressor was...
Yeah.
But...
And it's...
I don't know.
It's a good design to have it fault toward hot.
Yeah.
But like a couple mornings, you go into the elementary, the Franklin Elementary and be...
Jill, did you have your contract in here?
laminates like this, laminates coming out.
Did you have that contract in here?
Because it's so hot. So they're...
Okay, so we're not doing any of that?
In that...
Okay.
All it takes was maintenance.
Are the new systems still air driven like that?
I don't know the new system.
She wouldn't... You think they'd have gone away from that?
The boilers that they have with maintenance will never run out. I mean, they'll never...
Okay.
They will always be repairable because the pieces are replaceable. They're expendable. After eight years, you replace this and you put in a new pipe and the thing would last forever.
And their gas spire.
I hear you.
Okay, so we don't, so I don't have to worry about that.
An electrical?
We're not discussing that.
They have a deal with the gas company that they get a lower rate.
For city management strategy?
A hailment, like when it's minus 20 and there's high demand for natural gas in our area. The gas company can say, hey, you need to switch, because you're a large consumer, you need to switch to fuel. And...
Separate boilers that are fueled?
No, you switch the same boilers over from natural gas.
You just put different nozzles?
Change the orifices and change to burn a different fuel. And honest to God. The fourth period of game seven of Wild Game in Colorado. And natural gas, but not for...
We have a lot on this pool session.
We'll switch those tomorrow.
Just...
Now I gotta call my plumber.
Strategy.
And it's, you know, 10 o'clock at night on Saturday, it's minus 20.
Did you do it? It's a conversion.
I know. Takes me a phone call.
Or somebody else does the conversion.
Oh, yeah, I know. I had to call him. Figure out how to do it. He called his helper and called a contractor.
Good evening and welcome to City of Gilbert City Council Meeting Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 at 6:20 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor, Councilor Pontenin?
Here.
Councilor Heitzman?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Polis?
Here.
Councilor Skinsich?
Here.
I also have city attorney, city, or chief police, Clerk Zoller, and I also have city engineer on Zoom.
Thank you. We have a quorum. If you'd all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we have an addition.
Mayor, if I may, just would like to add on the, under the consent agenda, resignation of an employee.
Move. Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman to add the resignation of a city employee under the consent agenda. Correct. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries. Five zero. Nothing further to add? Consent agenda.
Move. Part.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries. Five zero. Any public input tonight? Yep. Pardon me?
Sewer issues.
Please come up and let us know.
Um, I'm just coming here tonight. I received my $100 fine on my utility billing for the I-9 inspections. I called, who's it, uh, SEH? SEH multiple times to schedule an inspection and all failed in the first year when the information was given out. Since then, wasn't able to call and I just feel that it's unfair that I'm not being given a $100 fine for something that I tried to schedule and was unable to do so. And now I'm going to be losing wages due to the fact that I have to miss work in order to come and get my house to my inspection. And not a small amount either. I had to miss four hours of work in order to do this and fuel costs international policy. So just looking to get that back in my pocket here.
You live in Gilbert or you're... Okay. I guess I don't know what to say. Uh, do you have any proof of calling SEH or?
Years ago at this point.
Yeah.
When it's first being held, so.
Do you have a inspection scheduled now?
Tomorrow at 16:00.
So the original request was to have it done by the end of 2021. And so actually people had to hold on a year to get it done. Have you tried having a colleague of the state to help you?
I called him.
Prior to having it on the schedule for tomorrow?
Can't say, huh? Just had to contact the SEH multiple times. I mean, first month of it was all... Life happens. Slipped my mind, but now it's going to cost me. Bet this baggage, everything, literally my $500 and all of them lose because of an inspection. I'll have their $100 back onto it.
Is there someone you could have to go to your house instead of you?
I work eighty hours a week. My wife works three jobs.
It's just a suggestion. We've had the same issue. Lots of people, you know, have to take out work in 15. This is the best, um, situation where we get someone else in there to make these wages. It's just a suggestion. They spent 20, I mean, two years. They started in 2021, so... While I understand it, you didn't reach out to the city and you said, hey, you're not the only one. We live in awful people, but we've discussed it at least a dozen times in the last year, even here, since I've been here, to remind people this time, get on schedule.
Okay, I guess I might answer one for you, but...
Any other public input? Okay, we'll move on to the reports from mayor and council. All I'd like, I have on the, my agenda is calendar parking. Remind the people that it's going to be starting next month, November 1st through the end of May, I believe it is. Uh, we ask that you adhere to it daily. Reason being, it's for snow removal. And we're, I hear, supposed to be getting a lot of it this year, so please be diligent in moving the vehicles according to calendar parking. Thank you. Councilor Pontenin?
Yeah, uh, this kind of pertains to the minutes that were recorded. So I'm gonna give my report, not to correct the minutes, but I'm gonna add to the minutes that I wasn't, uh, you know, the statements I made weren't recorded in the minutes, so I'm gonna kind of record what I said and I'm going to add to it also, so then it can be recorded in next, uh, minutes of the next meeting. So when that 34% budget increase that we had, and we mentioned that half of it was, you know, from the public works truck and fire truck. And I mentioned that, that the other half, you know, was from insurances and wage increases and other costs. Cost of living was also part of it. But what we failed to mention was $127,000 payment for the fire truck and public works truck a year. But that is for 15 years, and I don't think the people are aware of the length of that payment. And the interest on that 1.2 million comes to $1,905,000 that we're paying back. I just want to make that clear to the public, the actual cost. So I'd like to just reflect that in next, the minutes of the next meeting. That's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Heitzman?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Councilor Polis?
The only thing I want to report is that I think it's starting Monday, the school auction in Gilbert here on, is do bid, has two auctions going on, so there's a lot of cool stuff on there, so if you're interested, maybe go and check that out. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilor Skinsich?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. And I'll just add to the note from last council. It was asked by a resident to acquire the lights from the old school. We did submit a letter to the school and I believe they said we could take them. So our public works will be acquiring those two lights outside, I believe, the elementary school. And hopefully the city can decide where to place them. And that's all I have. Fire chief isn't here. City attorney?
Chief, big mayor, council, um, I don't have any formal report to make, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Chief teacher?
Mayor, council, a couple of things, again, just to reiterate about the, um, calendar parking. To kind of clarify a few things, that when we do issue calendar parking tickets, we generally issue them after midnight. So usually between midnight and four in the morning. The changeover is technically eight o'clock the night before, but people are coming home late. So we usually issue citations between midnight and four. And we do not issue them during the day at all. The only issue is going to be is Wisconsin Avenue is, has, has quite a few rental properties. And we're seeing a lot more vehicles there where it's very tight and people are parking during the daytime on both sides. And that's going to probably cause some issues if we get more snow. So we may have to put some special signage out. Like I said, we try not to issue citations during the daytime. We try to get them on the right side, so applause when they get through by 7, 8 o'clock in the morning, the roads are cleared. But I think Wisconsin, New York Avenue are going to be a problem this year just because of the sheer amount of vehicles. Um, and we may get to the point where we may have to issue citations, uh, on those two streets because it gets very narrow during the daytime. So I've talked to Sammy too about trying to make it a priority to keep that first 200 blocks of Wisconsin open, uh, as it's, every year, it's, it's a problem. It's tight. There's no way you can get a fire truck through there, get cars and trucks, but not a fire truck. Or even, even the loader had troubles going through next, last year. So we may get to that point, but we generally do not. If people ask about the changeover time, as long as they're changing by midnight, they will not be ticketed. So we try to be pretty fair in that and just try to get compliance, so when they come out at four, five in the morning, the vehicle's in the right spot. So we don't like writing tickets more than anybody else, so... Last month, we had 287 calls for service. Um, it's kind of a norm for September. Usually we're right around, up to 400 during the summertime, summer months, so we're kind of average on there. A couple of things that we've seen in the last year is our heroin overdoses are the highest they've ever been. We've used more Narcan in the last 10 months than we have, so we're starting to see a little bit more with narcotic related stuff. I know one thing that was a hot button issue was, I just went through the numbers today. We stopped 37 ATVs on Main Street for operating on the Main Street. So, um, is it bad? I, you know, do we miss them? Absolutely. But I know that was an issue that the council was brought up about the ATVs on Main Street. Of those 37 ATVs, and I'm just guessing, about 25 to 30 of them were actually following an app, a player's trails map that was incorrect, but I believe that has now been changed in the last, uh, month or two. It's been changed, so hopefully that'll decrease, so... If any else, the council?
Are those stops on the ATVs going north, south on Main Street?
Yes.
Using it as a, as a route?
Yep, yep. And what's happening is they'll have players, a lot of them right inside the machines, or they'll use the phone apps, was showing our Main Street as a, as a trail.
So the bike, the bike trail is throwing them off because it's lined as a bike trail and they're using that as an ATV trail?
I don't know how the GIS works with that, but, um, but the GIS was shown on Main Street basically from Alaska Avenue all the way down to Broadway, so...
Yeah, because it's striped.
Yeah, possibly, yep. So that was, so most of the people that we dealt with were just trying to, you know, they were trying to follow, follow the laws, so, um, but now I think with that app being corrected and a few other things, I think you'll see the, because we did see a huge increase in the last two, three years of ATVs on Main Street, so... We stopped 37 of them. You know, I'm sure there was another 50 to 100 that we didn't see, I suppose, so maybe more. So overall ATV, uh, overall ATVs were pretty good this year. We didn't have as many complaints as usual. We did stop well over 200 ATVs this year though, on traffic stops, so we did stop quite a few for miscellaneous things, so...
Is there ATV trail signs in the city that directs you to arrows and everything?
So, well, actually, we had a...
There is?
Mayor Smith spent a lot of time, of his own time, painting, but that painting only lasts for about a year, if that. It gets wore off in the sand. And then we did have some signs up, but the signage has not been great. Uh, I plan on meeting with them, ATV park, and see if they'll, they've got those signs everywhere and then maybe they'll make signs for us so we can put them on our poles through the alleys. Because like I said, the majority of people are trying to do the right thing, but, you know, we don't have the proper signage either to... When these people, a lot of times they get down by the campground, they don't know which way to go, you know, they're lost, so...
Signage is an issue, even throughout town. So if somebody from out of town coming in, they have no idea, stay on the trail, but if you want them to go to a business, they don't know how to get there.
Right. And then next council meeting, um, I have a presentation. It'll be about 10 or 15 minutes. So I won't talk too much tonight. We'll save it for next time, so hopefully next meeting is shorter, so. Are there any other questions on me?
Yeah, you alluded to additional signage for Wisconsin, for Wisconsin Avenue, for, uh, calendar parking. Do we need to be proactive and pre-approve some additional signage?
I think what we'll do is, because the ordinance is already in place, that we can issue citations. Like most cities, they issue citations 24 hours a day. We just don't because we don't usually, our streets are generally wide enough, unlike Virginia's, um, but that road does get narrow. And, uh, Sam's done a pretty good job of trying to get those first blocks, you know, hauled away, but when you got cars parked, it's tough to do it. But what we'll do is, when it gets to that point, we can put up our no police parking signs on the side and then the people get the point then, just because we're trying to, you know, we don't want to ding them for 20 bucks just to ding them for 20 bucks because they don't know, but we may have to, and it's mostly local traffic, so it won't take but a couple of times of warnings and stuff that people have figured out that we got to keep them on one side. Because it was very narrow last year. It was getting very tight, so, very tight. Perfect. And if I may be excused, I have another, this is, this is my two of three meetings tonight. I have a council meeting also in Bealavik, if I may be excused too.
Yes.
What's that?
I don't care. Either way, I'm going to sit and twiddle my thumbs, either here or there, so...
Thank you. And we have city engineer on Zoom. No volume.
How's that?
Better.
Thanks very much. And, uh, I'm full, fully updated. Uh, we have all necessary permits, uh, got the contracts all original and soft that are deciding now. They have a pre-destruction meeting next week, and they plan on doing most of the construction yet this fall. That includes the most sanitary sewer line on Highway 135, so... That's an update on the construction and we have a meeting with the DNR on the land acquisition process. So that's kind of good. Uh, who works for the easement that the DNR are looking for. I didn't understand when we left that is there going to have representatives after your next fall so they can lock over 24 to present a plan or present some options to the council. And all, uh, mayors, red and black were, uh, at the meeting. Week ago?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the acquired in that 22 acres, uh, across the hollow gas station. That's all I have for now, please.
Thank you, John. Hmm, Sammy's not here. Campground, I take Wendy's gone for the...
No, they're actually leaving tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay. Yep. And library, so...
Good evening, everybody. Okay, um, I still have some of the solar boxes for the equipment this weekend on Saturday, so please come in there free, pick some for your whole family. I have some more of the acrylic painting canvas and painting sets for our people of Gilbert, if you'd like one. One for family, please come in and pick it up. That is all. I have the, um, ERAS coming Friday and then next Wednesday. Hopefully they can help a little with the pasty safer, pasty people, do a little cleanup for them. And mayor and council, like, if they would have a little meeting with you, we'll find Mr. Carter.
And we're, we're... Yep, and we're looking into it.
I thank you. And that's all I have. Just keep me updated, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Advisory boards?
Good evening. Um, so we'll start out with one that we talked about in the working session. Campground Board had a, had a quorum this year, this, uh, last week and had several, we have several different recommendations. But the first one and probably the most important one is, um, the recommendation for the city to change its reservation platform and customer database platform. Our recommendation was to move to Firefly and leave our existing, um, program that will help us to, um, trim costs for the monthly fees as well as give us a host of different revenue opportunities as we move forward. And so that was our first recommendation and hopefully what I'm asking, what I'd be asking for is for the council to approve that so that we can hit the ground running this week and start the process of doing a transition.
I'll move. I'll support.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman. Further discussion? Do we have a final cost to that?
We do not have a cost because the model is, is a per reservation charge. It's 350 per reservation made. Um, and then 350 per month for any of the seasonal reservations. So it's, it's very much dependent upon the volume, whereas our current contract is, it's a flat fee plus reservations made. So it will go down certainly, um, but we don't have a definite number of what that is. And then if we decide to take other actions like move credit card processing fees to customers or implement other types of, uh, fee based, um, opportunities, we would raise revenue that way.
Perfect. I guess in our discussion, none of that was brought up, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I guess I never asked either, Paul. Is there, uh, will there be additional hardware necessary? Scanning guns or laser?
Um, no, that's actually, um, well, nothing immediately. Um, we, so it's all cloud based. So your, will be assigned, you know, an admin username and password and then they'll be able to set up different security levels for various different users. Unlimited number of users. And then if we choose to, if we want to get like a, a point of sale scanning gun, we can certainly make that purchase and it's, it's a universal one that just goes right into whatever computer you're using and it integrates directly with the system. So for, from a standpoint of store management, I would certainly, you know, I think that's probably going to be something down in the future to say, hey, let's spend 200 bucks on a, on a scanning gun.
Yeah.
So...
Perfect. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries. Five zero.
Thank you. I'll start to coordinate with Jill on, on doing that, so this will mean that we will continue our camp life contract for this year and then we'll ramp up with the new system and get a transition so that we can get that taken care of. So we will be ready, uh, by January first to start with the reservations with the new system. Second one, um, this is something that we talked about towards the tail end of last year and we said that we'd bring it to the council, is that because Wendy is remote for six months out of the year and kind of some of the technicalities of the city's existing Zoom license for city council meetings, I understand there's some archiving purposes and things like that where you wouldn't want to necessarily give out a username and password to unapproved people. So our recommendation is for this year to have an additional Zoom license at a cost of $149.90 to come out of the campground budget to facilitate having meetings with Wendy included for the campground board. And we even talked about this would be something that if there are other boards or commissions that would need this service, they, we'd have a dual account for the city so that, um, you know, so other boards could use this if needed. That wouldn't be the primary focus. The primary focus certainly would be the campground, uh, business. So, um, the request is for us to be able to, um, buy a Zoom pro license for one year at $149.90 coming out of the campground board budget.
Move.
Moved by Councilor Polis.
Yeah, I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Heitzman. Any further discussion? Yes.
We already, we currently have Zoom licenses. We have one or just for the city? And they would have use of that though, wouldn't they?
The one part is that they have to, you almost have to have the city person here signing with our financials and our information.
Okay.
So that would be the where the separation would be.
Okay, all right. That's what I was doing. Okay, all right, that's what I was, that's all. Thank you.
And that's, that was going to be my follow-up question was, is there a way to get a rider account or a...
We don't incur a cost either way, but I can see it's cheaper to manage just a rider off ours, not really show us in terms of that level, but I think than that seems cheaper.
Maybe it's, you know, $89 instead of $149.
Right. Yeah, we don't get it.
And that's something that will be used here, right?
Yes, correct.
Chambers, so it's something that...
Yep.
Because it seems to me that in 2020, the, the fire department, when I was chief, had to use that Zoom, the city's Zoom program or authorization for, to hold our meetings. And I don't remember if it was a rider account to it or if it was...
We used that account, but we had to kind of work together so meetings weren't going on at the same time.
Yeah, there was a, there was, it was a kind of a cluster-y thing, having to, you know, have a calendar to sign up. We needed on, you know, our first Monday, well, so does the cemetery board or whoever it is.
Yeah, we can look into it, see what, what options we have. I know we're doing right now pretty poor mon, so it's probably better to stay.
Yeah, I think, I would imagine it's probably be an extra license on the city's account. I don't know that it's going to be significantly different, but I mean, at max it would be 150 bucks.
You know, if, you know, we're already kind of pre approving that based on whatever, but if we could look into that, that would...
Sure. Yeah. As long as we have the tool.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you very much for that one too. So the next one kind of is, is one that kind of sets us up for next year. So one of the things that we will be looking at in terms of rates, and we have not made any recommendations yet, but we've talked about at least for the last two cycles of having the seasonal campers pay their monthly rate plus electric. One of the enabling pieces of this is to make sure that all of the, all of the campsites have that ability to have electric meters on it. The good news is we already have most of the infrastructure in place for all of the designated monthly sites with the exception of two. Campsites A2 and A4, which are currently 50 amp service, they have just the meter pedestal or just the pedestal without a meter. And so our recommendation, so that we can go forward and start charging, is that we could have at the beginning of the season to have those two pedestals replaced with ones that have electric meters on them. We've got spare meters, so it would be essentially the meter box or the pedestal, which I believe is a range of between 700 to a thousand dollars per box. We may even actually have some in stock, but to get that going and have that also come out of the campground funds, that would allow us the ability to make more revenue. And so our recommendation was to ask the council to move in that direction.
I'll make that motion.
A second for discussion. How many, how many meters are you talking?
It's two pedestals total.
Just four meters.
Yep, and we can, we can use some of the surplus meters that we already have in stock. I know that Sam has several of them down in the, in the storage, so.
So they'll be manually read.
Yep, and so the meters, to be, to be absolutely clear, the meters that get read for the campground expense portion of the budget, those are the master meters. There's like four of them, I believe. These would be specifically the meters on the pedestals, which the campground host would be responsible for reading at checkout and then, and then inputting into the new system so that the customer can be charged.
Okay.
So it's kind of, they're like sub-meters.
So these are additional campground director duties?
Yes, yep.
Has, has that discussion been had with Wendy?
Yes, yeah, we've already, we've already had that. I mean, it's, I can tell you from personal experience, it's really, you have to go to every site and inspect anyway, so it's essentially taking a picture on your phone and bringing it back to the office.
Has she been doing that with the other ones already installed?
She hasn't because we haven't been charging electric. So we have the infrastructure to do it, we just haven't, as part of policy and rates, we haven't done that.
Mayor.
Yes.
Are you, you said just the seasonal for right? Right now you're...
Correct, correct. It would be just the seasonals.
Why wouldn't you do, I guess, why wouldn't you want to do them for all of them with electrical?
We certainly could do that. I think that is a broader conversation on how our rates are structured. It's not really the norm that you would charge a daily, weekly, weekend type of camper electric. It is much more kind of industry best practice to charge seasonal, monthly customers the electric.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly can enter that conversation. I'd be happy to, to talk about that, but you know, it's just not there yet.
So, yeah, because if you're charging them, whatever, they make the reservation, isn't that part included right now as it is? We don't charge additional?
That's correct. The current, the current is we do not charge electric for, for anything, so it's baked in, so. It's also more impactful when you talk about seasonal and monthly. They're the type of campers that are much more likely to have three air conditioners running in the summer and really kind of pulling a lot of draw on that. So that's, that's one of the reasons why the industry has kind of gone that direction.
You see some of the buses pull in for the weekends though, don't you?
Oh yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but it's, you know...
Get up to the 50 yard.
They're also only there for like two days, three days, and then you've got like two or three days where you're not using any electric because the site is empty.
Right.
You know, so whereas with the seasonal, they're there, you know, 30 days out of the month and they're constantly using, especially if they have pets is one of the things that's a big driver. If they have pets, they're keeping their air conditioning on.
That's all I have. Thanks.
So motion by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis. Any further discussion?
No, actually supported by Bob.
Yeah. Counselor Poten. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 5-0.
Okay. And we're to the fourth of five recommendations. I think I'm actually going to hold back the fifth one because I think it might warrant having some discussion at a working session. So, but the, the fourth recommendation was some general campground repairs. We had a walking tour earlier this year as we do, and one of the, the key pieces was we noticed that there were some, some structural things that needed to be addressed with the pavilions. Both of the pavilions have roofing that is not, not good at all. And then one of the pavilions, the one that's actually in the campground is off of its footings and needs to be reattached to the concrete. And so our recommend, recommendation is to start the bidding process for that so that at some point next year, we can start that work. And then we threw in one additional one, which we had, we had asked of in the new campsites, but was, apparently was not included. There is a sewer, storm sewer grate or a storm sewer that runs between site D9 and the playground area that has a quite large opening to it. We'd like to have some safety measures to put a grate over that so that kids aren't crawling through that or get stuck in it. It's one of those things, it's only a matter of time before something bad happens and so we kind of rolled those all into one if the city can move forward and start the bid process so that we know how, how and, you know, what the cost is going to be for doing those repairs there. We consider all of those to be safety issues that really need to be addressed.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor...
Sorry, anything to move?
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to allow the bidding process to begin for the safety measures on culvert, I believe it is, and then...
And the roofs on the two pavilions.
Upgrade roofs and...
And reattaching.
Pavilions.
Are you talking pavilion at the beach too, the second one?
Yes, that, that roof is also beyond its useful life.
Is the campground part of the beach maintenance? I thought the city, that was a city's...
It, it's gone back and forth honestly as to who's responsible for it. It makes sense that that would, you know, that you could use campground funds for those repairs because it's right there. If you want to approach that as a one-off, I mean, that's fine, you're probably going to get a better, a better bid for materials, et cetera, if you do them both at the same time.
Agreed. Yeah.
I know Sam has normally done that in the past.
Yeah.
He did the office and the bathrooms, is that a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you very much. As far as the last one, I'm going to forward the recommendation on to Jill so that we can get it on a working session. It was talking more about long-term, the long-term master plan, which I think that warrants a larger conversation, so.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
The wifi down there.
Yes.
Talking, you know, my dad stays down there all summer and he's talking with others that stay there seasonally and they have a hard time. He can get wifi maybe in the living room, but not in his bedroom. And it sounds like it's an issue for a lot of people down there where they can't get signal. Is there anything, is, I guess, can that be looked at or...
We can certainly do some work on that. Wifi on campgrounds is, can be still pretty expensive and I think the first place is we'd have to look at what system we have, you know, what types of modifications can be made. I know at my place, I actually split the signal into three different signals. I have my office and admin signal and which, and I use MediaCom. I have a seasonal signal, which I give out to all my seasonal guests, you know, and they kind of keep the code. And that's kind of like the medium priority and then my lower priority is for guests. When you had, the thing is when you have a lot of guests that come in and, you know, you've got two, 250 people, everybody's got a phone, they want to sign up to the wifi, it, it pulls from the bandwidth from everybody else. And so that's probably one of the things that we'll want to look at is a system that has a capability of, of having a tier structure to the system so that your business functions are the most critical and then obviously giving the next best service to the folks that are there all the time.
I know he said even everybody's gone Sunday evening, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it doesn't matter what day it is. And I mean, they've stayed in Houston, they've stayed all over quite a few different over the years, but for some reason here it just isn't that, it's not a very good wifi.
And honestly, I mean, I don't know how long ago that system was put in. I mean, it could be, you know, anything more than like three or four years for a wifi system. Honestly, you're looking at a complete new technology. That's the other thing about wifi conversations in campgrounds is that every four to five years, you're installing something new to be able to stay, stay up to date with the next latest and greatest thing for customers. And, and that's, that's kind of a customer expectation thing is that, hey, I've got, you know, I've got three Roku TVs and I should be able to stream on all of them at the same time.
You'd be happy to do one.
Right. Exactly, exactly, so.
Just something to look at.
Yep, absolutely. I'll, I'll jot that down as, as one of our projects to kind of take on. You know, I don't, I don't think that we would necessarily open with it, you know, for next season, but it's something that we could make a mid-season repair on or change to, so.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. Couple updates here. I'd like the board or council to go ahead and approve me to send a letter of support on behalf of Fayle. They are applying for some aquatic soil and water conservation grants for dealing with aquatic species down at Orbegon on their side where the beaches, and they do a couple areas. So they'd like us to submit a letter of support on their behalf to, that to St. Louis County. So if I could get approval on that.
Did you say Orbegon?
Yeah, she said that they do Orbegon in spots and where was the other one? She had two spots, their beach and then some other places that they must, I don't know if they...
Oh, they lump them together?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they do them all at once and they've done them for the last few years, so.
Okay. I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to approve the letter for support for Fayle for, to the St. Louis County. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 5-0.
Operations Director, Sam Lotiger has asked me to request the council to make a determination on alley pickup. If you would approve, they would like to start on October 30th, run through November 3rd, doing tree branches less than four feet and any leaves must be in bags. So they would have staff available to do that between, again, October 30th to November 3rd. They would just kind of go around and pick them up as they're sitting out there as normal had done in the past if council would approve that.
Move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to set alley pickup for fall pickup, October 30th through November 3rd. Any further discussion?
So you're going to post that somewhere?
Correct.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 5-0.
Next, I would like authorization to reimburse a gentleman who started his electric account back in 2012. We've researched as far back as we can, we do not find he's been reimbursed a hundred dollar deposit and he's asking if he could have that back. I don't see any place, can't find that, it's already been refunded and it's still on his account, so we'd like to go ahead and refund that back to him for his electric fund. Again, that, he's at 108 New York Avenue, has been there for many years, always paid on time. We usually only keep them three years, he's just never asked for it in the past, so it's kind of been with some of our council.
And I guess the burden of proof would be on the city to say, no, we paid you back in so-and-so and...
And I can't find anything, we went back, so.
I didn't even realize you got a refund. I should get my refund.
Well, you live in Sparta, that's a difference.
That's for sure. Tell me about it.
I'll support.
We're treated very differently in Sparta.
Sorry to hit a dirt block.
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor Skinsit, supported by Counselor Polis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 5-0 to reimburse the gentleman.
Thank you. Finally, campground currently is 121,713.42. That is after all of our transfers through August, September, I'll have an updated and next meeting for all of their expenses to date. I may even go through the end of, end of their, her season if I have all those bills on time from all of her vendors and just be able to close out the season for that. Regular checking, after all of our current expenditures on our list and outstanding checks still holding, we have 1,43,159, um, let me tell you, 1,43,159. Again, keep in mind, we've gotten our PFA 693 interim, we've gotten some St. Louis County tax portions and just quite a few deposits that have come through, which have put us in a healthy position at this point. Just waiting for some of those checks to clear and move forward. That's all I've got. Any questions?
So are any of those loans due that will chip into or get into the 1 million dollars that we have loans that are due?
February.
Till then?
Yes.
Nothing this year though?
Nothing this year.
So it'll carry over to February?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
Unfortunately, they have come February and August together, so chunks at that time.
Thank you. For old business, Sammy's not here. Counselor Poten, anything you wanted to share with the wastewater treatment plant for old business?
Yeah, I was there today and I was talking to them. They're having a trouble with mud in the system and it happened after the main street was done or in that time period where the alleys are done and all this other work was done on the main street, they never had mud in the system before and they can't deal with mud in the system. Wastewater treatment plants are not made to deal with mud and they're getting mud and I know, I talked about it last time, and Sammy said that they were looking into camera and trying to locate it and they can't locate it. But they're thinking that if somebody didn't cap a pipe or something when they were doing this infrastructure work or they, they hooked the storm sewer to a sanitary or there's something bad that happened and it's really causing them grief down there.
Is it more so when we get the heavy rain or is it just...
No, it's, it's all pretty steady. The way they're making it sound. And like I said, the INI is not being corrected for some reason. All that, you know, all the, everybody's been, you know, upgrading their systems in order to not put it into the sanitary, but we're still getting a lot of INI. And, and one of the reasons is like I say, the Rock and Pines up there, when the old trailer park, you know, is still contributing to the INI, I believe, you know, because of the pump readings that they have in the spring, especially during the melt, you know, that's where they're getting the high pump readings, so they're getting a lot of INI coming in during the melt and we're... And we're assuming it's coming from those abandoned sites where there's broken pipes letting the water run in or whatever, you know. So. And I was talking to the girls down there today, and they, and they agreed with me that something should be done. And there's three manholes that are taking the effluent from the old part, the trailer park. And if you plug those off, you know, on the exit side, and then you could see how much you're getting in from the old park system. It would accumulate in the manholes. And then if there's no problem there, well, you've eliminated that problem anyway. If it doesn't accumulate and it builds up in there, you know that isn't an issue, so you can move on elsewhere. But I think that should be done, you know, to try to get a handle on this INI situation.
Another troubleshooting step.
Yeah, right, yep.
Yeah.
It must be better than it was?
No, no.
Or is this plant just handling it?
No, this last rainfall, when we had a couple inches here.
Yeah.
She says that equalization pond went up 17 feet. She said, just on that rainfall. It's not the snowmelt or anything, it was just on the rainfall, so we're getting a bunch of INI coming in from somewhere.
17 feet, I mean, that wasn't even, it wasn't even a major deluge that we had.
I know.
Boy, it was a lot of mud.
We haven't corrected the problem for some reason at all. It doesn't even look like we touched it with all the work we've done on the inspections and everything.
I know.
So what do we need to do, go back to the mud, what do we need to do there?
Well, Sammy's supposed to get a televising outfit to come and look and see if they could track it down.
Do we need to approve something?
We did, they did that.
We did that last meeting, that he was, to spend what, $5,000, whatever we appropriated for that. But the continuing process, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that it's a, it's a serious problem.
So it could be more than just what Sammy's idea of where he was pinpointing it.
Right.
It's still a wide.
We don't know where that big massive amount of mud's coming from to really causing problems.
With respect to the old trailer park, if you, and we've made this offer before, we still have the original blueprints and elevations, et cetera.
Somebody else.
Where the, where all of those risers are, sewer and water alike. They're sitting in my dad's basement. I'm trying to clean out their house anyway. If you're more than happy, I'll be more than happy for you to go down, but that might help me to see this stuff. The, the code in 1977, 1976 was different for the stand pipes that come up. They were much lower, so you probably, I'll tell you, you probably are getting some INI through those old caps. They're probably busted, water's probably flowing straight in there. Would be one of the easiest things to go through there, go through the parcels that the city built, or the city paid for, and find all of those uncapped things and cap them.
That's what I said, you could, yeah.
There's at least four active springs that run all year long in that, in that portion of the hill, along the cemetery, cemetery wall, that produce water, it was always a problem for us. And so I can tell you, those probably were a good portion of the INI that's coming from there.
Yeah, and that's why if you, if you blocked off the exit, you could actually see how much is accumulating in those manholes. And if it is a big issue where you had to throw a pump in there to pump it out on the surface so it didn't go into the sanitary, you would eliminate that INI problem coming from there. And then you, and if you wanted to, then you block off, off the entrance, and that would dam it up and keep it in the old system. You know, it was just, the pipes would be full of water, and it would just eventually bubble out and go on the surface of that old trailer, you know, park, so.
To hit what you're throwing there, Paul, I don't think John or Sam would object to having those plans if you're trying to clean out dad's basement anyway.
Exactly. Anything I can get out of the basement is fine.
And I know your dad was helpful, and he said he would walk anybody over there and show them where the manholes were so they could go right to the back.
That'd be awesome.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
That'd be one process of elimination, so.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
So I don't know how, who, you know, do we instruct our public works people to do this? Or do we have to go beyond them? I'm not sure if they're able to handle it.
I think there's discussion with Sammy if he can, and then we can decide from there.
Yeah, maybe Joel and Sop have to go in and do that, you know, if they have some concrete off that exit or whatever they're going to do to plug it, just to see.
Are they getting a lot? I just, just think, it doesn't, doesn't that whole place, or doesn't it all go to that lift station right there?
Right there on the bottom of, yeah, right, the entrance is right there, there's that lift station? It goes to there. And in the spring, they had, one of the four-inch pumps were pumping for 24 hours straight. So I was telling you how much they were getting in, you know, where that pump would normally run an hour a day or something. 24 hours when the melt came. So there was getting, we were getting a lot of it, and probably from that old, you know, trailer park.
Yeah.
I'm just assuming.
Well, it'd be fantastic if we could get, get this done before winter season?
Yes, right, this fall, yeah, yeah.
If we can get it done in October, November, do we need to pre-approve Sam to, to start the process of, I don't know, a bid from Joel and Sop or a bid from?
Or if they could do it themselves, it's a matter of going down there with a ladder and, you know, damming up there with concrete or whatever you're going to use to plug up the exit. I don't know if they're capable or not, you know.
Unless they can dig it up and actually just plug off the, all the lines.
I think it would just be easier to go down there for now, you know, and if a future fix, maybe you want to do it that way, but for now. You know, just a test. And if there is a problem there, then, then you move on to somewhere else, you know.
Have them go through and check it out anyway.
Yeah, I'd say have a discussion with Sam and see if he can't get out there.
Right, yeah.
Since he's working on that other spot, too.
Yeah, so.
Counsel, I would suggest you just make a motion to direct Sam to do whatever you'd like him to do then.
Okay. Yeah, so make a motion that Sam goes and looks into the INI problem at the Rockin Pines and the abandoned trailer park. That's my motion.
Motion by Counselor Pottingen, supported by Counselor Heitzman to direct Sammy Public Works to inspect the, for INI issues at the abandoned, or the old campground?
The old trailer park.
Old trailer park. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think that the plans that Mr. Skurback has would be very, could be very helpful to Sam in that endeavor.
I agree, absolutely.
And if Sam realizes that this is above his scope or ability to get accomplished this autumn.
To let us know.
Let us know so that we can have him get a contractor in there to potentially start damming things up.
Exactly.
Good with that, Bob?
Yes, yes, that's good.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, five zero.
Did we actually get a second on that then?
I did, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Thanks for that input, that's disturbing. Onto new business. Greg, we'll bring you back up, sorry to keep you waiting.
Woo-hoo, Greg's here.
My leg's stiff enough. Okay, we had, we did the audit for years, 2020. So if you're going to have a discussion, proceed, meet some discussion.
Um, um, working session. And I just want to say, the point of emphasis would be, be just to try to eliminate in future audits the qualified opinion and also the finding with the cash reconciliation. And also area of concern is the permanent improvement fund deficit, how was that going to be handled? And also the operating losses in the, and I want to make sure I don't misquote myself, which would be in the, um, there's operating loss in both of, all three of the water, sewer usage and sanitation fund. Basically, the recommendation would be to look at those funds to make them have operating revenues, including the expense of the depreciation. So that's, um, highlighting pretty much what I have for the audits. Is there any questions?
So you're just talking about raising the fees in those utilities in order to make them solvent, in order to make them break even?
Right. Whatever you have to do as far as usage and the fees and, either that or reduce the expenses. There's only, there's only two ways to, um, eliminate a loss.
And keep in mind, for two years during COVID, we weren't collecting a lot of fees. Hopefully those regulations will start coming back in, although we're collecting fees again. So I think that will reduce the cost.
Yeah, and that's something to keep in concern. Sometimes maybe you're comparing apples with oranges depending on COVID and pre-COVID and post-COVID, so.
No, I don't have any, thank you.
I guess another thing, basically the deadline to finish the audit is June 30th. We had an extension to August 15th. We got it done at September 30th, right underneath, um, the gun. I know if you're, if you ended up going over, you may end up losing local governmental aid or could be held out. So I think that emphasis would be to try to hit the deadline as quick as possible. And it's all related to the number of findings and what's going on, on, as far as the workload of the audit and what happens. So I think that might be another overall goal to do is to do whatever so we can, you know, hit the mandate, the deadline that the state auditor has, which is normally June 30th.
So, so next year, when would you start the audit?
I, I have no idea. You'd have to, you'd have to contact one of the partners. But, I mean, that's definitely a concern or a thought, scheduling and try to, um, have the discussions so everybody is on board. You know, we like to do the audit, we want to have as much done, so we end up doing less accounting service and auditing. So it's, it's a scheduling and also a planning to do what's, you want to make the audit both for the city most effective and efficient. So we can do what we, do what we have to do and not be such a, I don't know, shouldn't say a burden, but make, make it less disruptive to the city, so.
So if you have any, everything in order, could you actually start the audit in January?
I don't think so. But, um, as soon as possible, possible, but we have to get in the schedule. And there's, you know, City of Gilbert's not the only one to audit, I hate to say that. And we have staffing problems ourselves, too, in order to get things done. It's been through attrition and getting people, it's still reeling from some of the COVID and the number of qualified people on our side, but that's not your problem.
It sounds like Clerk Zoller's aware of and has been taking steps to make some of the processes go a little bit more quickly and easier for you?
I agree, and where she's come through is, when she has any questions, as we're always available, if something comes up to ask and what can we do upfront to prevent a bigger problem down. So let's, let's handle things as they go. And that's, um, with her being there earlier and understanding what. Anything that needs to be done. Anyway, I agree.
And I know there was a, you and I had a discussion about a quarterly audit, which, you know, the major audit could be broken up into four pieces, and you could keep track in quarters, so it would, you know, it wouldn't take so long because you'd be able to have all the, you know, information. By the time you got to the fourth audit, you would already have everything. But like you said, it's a staffing issue with you guys, if you could have the people that could do the quarterly audit.
Yeah, that, the most things are done after a year end, but if you have stuff happening quarterly or as a little timing, it's a little bit like a reconciliation. You could be fixing things as you go. And that is a plan, but it's also a problem with staffing and also availability on the city side staff. Because that's something that's even, you know, if you have elections or whatever goes on, there's always a tremendous workload on the city as there is on, and a lot of us, tax matters takes a lot of, um, people that are busy doing taxes from January, April 15th to R and T. So there's, there's always a scheduling issue.
And so we have to vote this in.
To accept this audit?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit and accompanying recommendations of Greg Knutson, representing Walker, Drew and Honey. I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis. Any further discussion? To accept the financial statements and what's the, the audit from December 31st through December 31st, 2022, so for the year of 2022. Correct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, five zero. Thank you, and thank you for all your work. And resolution 2023-31, certifying proposed 2023 tax, oh, yeah, collectible in 2024 and setting the truth in taxation hearing date for 12/12 of 2023 at 6:01 PM.
Yeah, I mean, we did a proposed last meeting, we didn't have the resolution, so we're going to be setting that for time.
So, gotcha. So we don't need a motion to that, right? We're just setting the time for? Gotcha.
I'll move. I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to accept resolution number 2023-31. Resolution certifying the proposed 2023 tax levy, collectible in 2024 and scheduling a public hearing meeting for the 2024 budget. Any further discussion?
Just to be stressed, or to, to, to stress that, that this is just the preliminary.
Yes.
Yes, again, preliminary, we are going to work our best to lower the 34% levy proposed. All in favor?
But we're always, we're also setting the meeting for the 12th of two, aren't we, in the same resolution? So that last couple sentences you got to read?
Okay.
Be it further resolved?
Yeah, be it further resolved, that City of Gilbert, Minnesota intends to present the budget and levy to the public for information and to receive public input at a public hearing on Monday, December 12th, 2023, at 6:01 PM. Adopted this 10th day in October 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, five zero. INI process, final guidelines.
Mayor, if I can, this is the process that we've worked and we've been instilling and telling everybody and sticking to these guidelines. I would just like approval from the board so that we can enter this on the record as this is our process for the inspections themselves. As far as the re-inspections or the work, we will address that again as we get closer to the end of June. And just kind of to remember everybody that there's calling the city for their inspection to be scheduled. We have one or two days a month, depending on the volume of inspections. We do have quite a few, so I'm hoping that number gets less and less and less, and hoping to wrap these up sooner than later. It's, you know, the agreement to employ Chris Breland at $40 an hour and cover his workman's comp compensation until the process is finalized. And then I just want to remind everybody that if there's a discrepancy, if you're finding a lot of accounts with, for instance, Court Street, K and D, the same house. with, for instance, Court Street, K and D, one of the same houses. So there are a lot of old records we're cleaning out. There's a few houses in French area that have been demolished. They're in our records, not necessarily billing anybody, but in the French area records. It's every address in Gilbert. So this is really giving us a good opportunity. We're really cleaning up a lot of accounts, who are owned by mortgage companies, things like that. So it's a little bit of a good process in that respect, a little more work for us, but we're getting a really good cleanup on the accounts over at it. So if somebody has an inspection and S E H has been filled or anything, you just provide your verification and we will refund those monies as long as it was done prior to the September 12th original meeting. Or if you're on these current schedules, then you will no longer receive the billing after that month. So anyway, this month, 11th and April 12th, they won't be billed in November. They also get the September one, but this month it'll be eliminated. They'll take it off their bill so that they're billed on November 10th. It won't be on, just to kind of explain how that works.
So all they have to do is set up the meeting. They don't have, actually have the inspection. As long as they set it up, then you'll waive the $100, right? Am I understanding that right?
They will waive it, it'll eliminate it for the following.
Eliminate it for the following month, as long as they made the.
Inspection, correct. Because our, our expectation is we are not scheduling more like Chris Kenham. He's limited and his amounts, so he'll verify with us.
But as long as they've made the appointment, that.
They have to have the inspection.
They have to have the inspection also.
Correct.
Okay, not just the appointment being made.
Correct. So that's why we're doing it first and trying to set the first and second week. Because that will give us enough time then to verify what they were done and then remove that line from their bill for that following month. That's why we're kind of crunching this to timelines, the first and second week formally.
Right, okay.
Unfortunately, if you call first or second week and they're filled, we got to wait till the next month. We're still going to get charged.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. That's what I was getting at, yeah.
So if you need it, call in.
Correct. And if you're already calling, you know, fast, because some people are calling for their re-inspections.
Yeah, right now we only have the one date, the 18th, because tomorrow is booked up. I think he's regrouping 40 of them.
Forty? Really, tomorrow?
Eight to six thirty in fifteen minute increments.
Wow, that's good. That's good. Like they said, there's a hundred of them out there. And hopefully those are the ones that are contributing to the I and I and they get fixed because we're not seeing much change down there with the I and I, you know, it's.
Hopefully the old park, trailer park.
Yeah.
A lot of them haven't been fixed.
A lot of them haven't been fixed, being able to.
Yeah, and a lot haven't been, yeah, right. They might not be right, you know, the ones that did get affixed but not re-inspected. So hopefully that all adds up to less I and I.
Exactly.
Do you need a motion and approval on something here?
You know, just to have this on the record, even though motions, we have them in our records.
I'll move. I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Skins, supported by Counselor Heitzman to accept the inflow, infiltration inspection process final guideline. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And Knights of Columbus charitable gambling request, one date in January of 2024.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Skins, supported by Counselor Heitzman to approve the Knights of Columbus charitable gambling request for a date in January. And the date is?
January 21st.
January 21st of 2024. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And resolution 2023-32, due date change of utility bills.
So if I need, this is something we have, we did a previous prior, but we were positive that it was not for ordinance, so it didn't matter. In the ordinance, the ordinance does give us an opportunity to change my resolution. So I did list all of that in there and then just.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman for the change, resolution 2023-32, utility billing due date changed from the 10th of the month to the 15th. Is this something I should read or because it's in there?
I had a question on that. So if you don't get somebody's check in your hands by the 15th, then you'll be charged a penalty. Even if it's like coming from a bank check that's in the mail and you do not get it in your possession on the 15th and they dated it like the 13th, but you don't get it. This kind pertains to what we had here a couple of weeks ago. So how does that work now?
And you're correct. And if you have until the close of business on the 15th, if it's not there in our hands, it's on the 16th, you'll be charged that penalty. While I understand people pay by bill paid, but what they need to understand is bill paid. Now, I'll make send an ACH. Most of our smaller communities, they still take the funds from your check, or I mean, from your checking account, or they wait till the check clears. But they actually write a physical check in mail out themselves. And it states right on here, it's like if you use Marist Mortgage Credit Union or whichever, it says we'll take seven to 10 business days. It tells you that if you're not sending an ACH. Now, a lot of our small businesses don't accept it, so they wait for a physical check. And that is why ours took so long to clear that time. That yes, it came from her account, but they wrote a cashier check, a physical check, and then put it in the mail out to us.
I had a motion for this, right?
So people think that, and they're just giving me all the right to take it up.
I think so.
Right, so they have to be aware of how the bank is handling those checks. It's up to them. And if they make the screw up and they don't get it in your hands, they're going to pay the penalty. That's all. They're responsible, right.
Yeah, I did.
I thought.
Did we, no, not this one.
Yeah.
You just read it.
Because I asked if I had to read this.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't.
Just as long as the public's aware that they will not be getting any breaks anymore in that case.
I make a motion for this, did I?
Yeah, I think you did.
For which one?
Jeremy did it.
Yeah, I thought so.
For which one?
So the motion was Counselor Skins, supported by Counselor.
Oh, yeah, because anyone.
Yeah. It's motion seconded, no, we both did.
It's a long.
Just, just one thing on this. One spell, spelling error up on the top there.
Forgive me, I'm doing great and type all day long. I'm a spell checker, I do.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. We'll just blame him.
He's not here to defend himself, I'm going to blame him.
I can't believe Counselor Heitzman didn't see that.
I still don't see it.
Amending?
What page am I on?
Yeah, no, he's.
Oh, I'm on a different page.
Yeah.
Well, I wonder.
Second page.
I'm just glad.
Okay, on to resolution 2023-33, seasonal disconnect.
Am I to see this actually in our, it's supposed to be do them, but what Brian suggested, now we have something saying we don't do them, so.
So we're just approving that we don't do it?
That we.
I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Skins to accept resolution 2023-33 for a seasonal disconnection of utility or refuge. Any further discussion?
And it's just if you do disconnect for a year, you're, you have the ability as long as it's for a one-year or more period.
Correct.
Correct.
But that way it's not seasonal.
Right, yep, yep.
Correct.
You're just terminating your services.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And the special election, we just going to table?
I'll make a motion to table that.
Motion by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis to table the special election discussion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, hopefully Attorney Lindsey will get a copy to the committee necessary. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. Accept appraisal report on site property and casualty inspection.
Because you can so absurdly large degrees on this, and the title of it, you know, it's pretty, we've got quite a bit of moving structure out of this house that's working out. I really have very little at the contract, and that's the term of life. So he did self-insure himself for many years, and that he said, being, just helping. Being in those things, it was very, very, very complex. There are no contracts, but I have, because we just, we don't, we don't, we're at the same place. People that didn't know what they're doing, but we're in the middle of a new one, the 40th of the year. And so updates, they're wanting to, they're increases.
On that note about insuring something, do we have coverage on empty lots that the city owns? Do we have liability coverage through this plan on city lots or any tract of land that we do own anywhere?
You mean as far as risk goes, do you have coverage?
Through this plan? So, so if somebody had an accident, say we have 20 acres somewhere and they have an accident and they come back to sue the city, do we have coverage on that?
Right, you can see all of the properties in there and they inspected and that are covered in that policy.
Right, and I didn't see.
It depends on their, what you're saying, like how they were, I guess, injured. I mean, obviously there's coverage for everything that the city, post the city, they would need.
So like there's 30 acres up here by where the plumbers are building. We have a property up there and say somebody was in there and they were hunting and they fell on a rock and they cracked their head and had brain injury. Would we be covered? Through this plan, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, in that scenario, you're going to have more than just the city involved. I mean, if you're talking about a contractor that was also injured, you mean a lot.
I'm just talking about a hunter walking there.
And you're asking if there's coverage on city property? It would absolutely depend on how they felt that the accident happened. I mean, every single scenario is going to be something different. I mean, you have coverage, period, but you can't say you have coverage for every single little thing.
Yeah, that's right.
That would be, that would be a ridiculous.
When I, when I was reading this, I didn't see actual bare, you know, land that was covered at all. That's was my question, that's all.
I guess we're talking about specific properties, that would be.
Any city property that we own that isn't have a building on it or any, you know, any, any buildings on it.
I guess I'd have to look over your liability policy to understand what you're looking for. And that's not something I did. I just briefly checked over your properties. I also did not have last year's policy compared with this year's policy as far as your liability goes.
I guess that's just a general question, you know, if we are covered in cases like.
I'll look into that for you, and I'll do what I can.
All right.
You need a motion on this?
Yeah, and that's to.
I'll move.
By Counselor Skins, supported by Counselor Polis to accept the League of Minnesota City's insurance trust property casualty coverage premium. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it will be more like with the actual premium, which will start in January 2024 on business figures.
Exactly. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And at this time, we'll go into a closed session for contracts, employee contract evaluation, conduct discussion.
Move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries.
And for the record, Mayor, that's under Minnesota statute 13D 0371.
Yeah, yeah.
I got my own. Joe's got one, Brian's got one. Joe needs to come more often, it's going to be a tough sign.
Yeah, that's not. It's as long as they don't send like just a person to sit in the chair.
Well, thank you for saying.
That didn't help. It just doesn't work. You know, they hopefully know what they're doing.
I would have rather, and I kind of didn't. We just spaced everybody out, rolled the whole room, then.
Some people still use that as an excuse to just not work.
Yep.
You think that's like nighttime reading or what? You want all that? I mean, even what he handed out, that handout was just very good.
You got it?
Hmm? No.
I make a motion to reconvene the normal session of tonight's meeting.
Support. Motion by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis to reconvene our regular agenda council meeting at eight 16 PM. It looks like 16 to me.
Five.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. Okay.
All right, so I'd like to make, I need a motion to close the city employee turnover investigation with the results that have been determined. Looking to close it with the results. We all have been notified.
I'll support.
I'll move.
I thought you did. I thought that's what he's, he made a motion.
Looking for a motion.
No, I was drawing up the motion.
Oh.
Fine, then go ahead.
Motion by Counselor Skins, supported by Counselor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And do I have a motion for a conditional offer for the deputy clerk position to Marion DeLage pending terms of coming to terms with contract?
Move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And do I have a motion to direct Attorney Lindsey for this 360 review summary for our next council meeting on the 24th?
Move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And also do I have a motion to direct? Yeah, is that to? We have to accept it first? Or no?
It was to prepare the written.
Yeah.
Written, because, yeah. Motion to direct Attorney Lindsey to draft a contract for the campground hosts that she accepted our counter offer.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Heitzman.
Support.
Supported by Counselor Polis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And that was.
Does anybody know who won the baseball game today?
They lost.
They did? What was the score?
Nine to one.
Nine to one?
Yeah. Gave up four in the first inning.
Tough outing for the pitcher.
Any miscellaneous? Any miscellaneous?
That was it.
Pardon me? Do I have a motion adjourned?
Move.
Moved by Counselor Polis.
Support.
Supported by Counselor Heitzman to adjourn our tonight's meeting at 8:21 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, five zero. Meeting adjourned, thank you.